Yes, so tonight we are doing a live Q and A regarding the Ogden City Budget. And if you're watching via Facebook, you can submit your questions right there in the chat, and we will do our best to keep an eye on that and bring and give those to council members to answer. And also, if you are in the actual Zoom meeting, I'm going to allow chat to happen so you can submit. We'll limit one question per person, or I guess Angela, our Chair Taborca, I'm so sorry, I'll defer to you in that regard, but I'm gonna turn on the chat for everyone to use, and we can save that later. So the attendees who are joining us via Zoom can participate as well. So with that, we will go ahead and get started with the first question. And it states, "Given recent events and the death of George Floyd, does the Ogden City Council intend to defund the police department to focus more on race relations training and programs that better help people of color?"
Thank you, Brandon. And we'll ask Councilmember White to answer that question.
Thanks for allowing me to answer this. That's a very complicated question. George Floyd's death was definitely tragic and senseless. And however, I think that something good can come out of his death, and that is that we're having these conversations and really about thinking differently about how public safety can be and reimagine it. And so I appreciate that the question has been asked, because I know that quite a few people have actually reached out, and many of us have probably already had these questions asked to us in different ways. One of the things that I want to first start off by saying is that the police department has approximately about a $20 million budget. Of that, 17 million of that goes directly to salaries. So that's about 85% of that budget goes to salaries and wages. And then just a little under 10% then goes to things like communications equipment and their cars and other equipment that they use on a daily basis. So about 95% of all the budget is, it goes to either salaries and wages or things to protect them. So it's very difficult to say that we would come in and be able to sweep, you know, 30% out of a budget when that means that we would end up having to actually cut staff and salaries and people out of the budget. And I'm not sure that that would leave us with enough officers to do what we would want them to do is to protect and serve. So part of that is not, you know, I think we need to use a scalpel and not an axe. I mean, it's not just an easy thing to just to say, we're gonna chop, you know, some, "defund the police." But I do think we need to reimagine it, look at it, and figure out if there's a ways to increase training or do what we need to do from the police side. One of the things I want to mention, which was interesting, both Mayor Caldwell and I sit on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Board, and yesterday we unanimously voted to support two items. One of those is a plan that they have that's called Love, Listen, and Lead. And this plan, and the reason that this is important is that it's 248 cities across the state. But this plan is to, is an effort to assure that open lines of communications are happening between city leaders, constituents, particularly our community of color, in order to create policies and ensure respect. And I think with us pushing that forward, it's not just our city, it's not just another city, it's all of our cities pushing that forward, which I think is what we need to do to, again, to get that reimagining of what we can do with our police force and public safety. The other one was to support a ban on chokeholds. And the legislature, and just recently, actually, I think as of today, put through a ban on, a bill for a ban on chokeholds. So we are supporting that at a higher level. And one of the things I want to say, and I'll let somebody else chime in, is that I intend, and again, I say this again, I won't ever get this right, but I intend to work with my colleagues in the council and administration and the diversity commission to try to see if we can identify the, and review and evaluate any existing city policies and procedures that go along with training and just looking at making sure that we're doing the best that we can do. And I do think that we have a lot that we're already doing, we're just probably not communicating it well enough. And so I just want to say that, you know, the quick answer is, no, I don't think we're looking at defunding the police. But it's a very complicated issue, and one with, that obviously has risen to the top of all of our minds. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Councilmember White. I'm not sure if there's any other council members that'd like to comment. But yeah, I certainly got a lot of emails about this issue and outreach to me as well. And one thing I did was have a, just an impromptu community conversation behind the library on Saturday morning with some constituents, asking, just asking a lot of questions about these different issues and about the police budget. I see somebody asking specifics about the police budget in the chat as well. And so I'm not sure if we have the time in this half hours to really break down the place's budget for you, but maybe we could do that in a follow-up conversation, even with our staff, so that we could talk a little bit more about that. And then also, if anybody, you know, has any other questions or ideas about this, they could definitely reach out to the council members and, you know, talk about it more. Any other council members like to comment about that?
No, but I see the chat, and I appreciate Harvey Day's question. And I can actually reach out to him and show him where I got those numbers from the budget. So I can do that tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Do you want to read the next question, Brandon? Or do you have a new one, or any that we already had planned?
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank you for seeing Harvey's question. We'll move on to the second prepared question, which is, "What are some of the major improvements included in the budget, and will any of these be delayed as a result of the current economic circumstances?"
Thanks. And we have Councilmember Stevens responding to that.
Thank you. Every year, we go through CIP, and we outline some of the improvements that need to be taken care of in the city. In adopting the budget, in other years, it becomes part of the process of the budget. And the, but this year is very unique. And in the concept of it is that sometimes our costs of the projects just overwhelms us. And so the important thing that we try to do, not only with the CIPs or the improvements in the city, but prioritize. And the important thing is that we find out those items in the city or services are more important to give full service than some of the others. And so those are the top priorities, the ones that citizens need to take care of, that the citizens are asking for us to take care of. One of them would be sidewalks. We need to have adequate sidewalks in the city, and some of our CIPs go into that line. Roads and services is another. We need to have transportation. The other ones would be uses of our citizens. For an example, we have allocated repairs for the Marshall White Center, and that's in our budget at the present time, because the repairs to the Marshall White Center is essential for the structure that is there, but is also essential for those who are occupying the Marshall White Center. The airport has a CIP, and we look at that. And granted, their funds or, or their projects are probably more expensive than some of the others, but we do receive from the federal government grants and funds to help offset some of those expenses. And so the key element in our budget and pointing out those items that need to be done in the city is prioritize. And through the administration and reviewing the budget by the city council and city and council's staff, we try to pick out those items that are most crucial for the success of our city, but also gives the service that needs to be taken care of.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Stevens. Any other comments for that one? Okay, next question, Brandon.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, give me one second. I'm so sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay, so this question is more geared towards the RDA, and it reads, "Why does the city put so much money into redevelopment activities instead of using those funds for police, fire, or other essential services?"
Great. And that's based Chair Blair's up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That was actually brought up last week as one of our public questions from the, from one of our constituents. And so I asked council staff if they would kind of put some stuff together for us that we could, and what they wrote is much better than, they said it way better than I could ever say it. So I'm gonna read a little bit of what they gave me back on that. It says, "Police and fire services are funded with property taxes and other tax revenues that are collected in the general fund. Most other essential services are funded with fees collected through utilities. No general fund money is proposed to fund redevelopment projects in FY21 budget. Funds for redevelopment projects are generated in tax increment project areas by property taxes paid on the completed projects in those areas. Those tax increment funds may only be used for projects within the boundaries of the specific project area where it is generated and can be, and can only be used for," and it gives a list of things such as administrative, overhead, financing, development costs, or environmental remediation, housing-related expenditures, incentives under a participation agreement, or land purchases, or construction of publicly owned infrastructure. And then it also goes on to talk, or to say, "The city does use funds derived from BDO lease revenue, which is not general fund money, to fund redevelopment projects. When the city council fills the proposed project merits additional investment." In the FY21 budget, there is $1.9 million proposed from BDO lease revenue. And there are six areas where those, where that funding will be, and the highest would be $1 million, which is a five-year, which is the fifth year of a five-year commitment to quality neighborhoods. So more than half of that is going into quality neighborhoods. I don't know if there's anything else.
Great. Thanks. Anybody else like to respond to that one? Fantastic. Next question, Brandon.
Yeah, sorry. So next question is, "How does the redevelopment board determine when and where to create a new redevelopment project area?"
Great. Would you mind answering that, Councilmember Nadolski?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Sorry if you noticed that I dropped out there for a minute. I don't know how it looked on the viewers' end, but my wife's on a Zoom call at the same time, so I must have lost bandwidth there for a minute. But I'm happy to be back and happy to answer this question, because it's actually a question that I had asked a lot prior to my tenure on the council, because I just couldn't figure out what the rationale was as to where they were and why. And at the time that we started, we had quite a few redevelopment areas. And we have fewer of them today, but we also have some new ones. And the way that it works is that the administrative, community, and economic development staff serve as the administrative staff, along with the executive director, who in our former government is the mayor. And then, of course, the city council acts as the redevelopment agency board. And so together, we decide on where those areas are. And there's no, like, secret formula, but it is important to note that they are used to help drive economic development in areas that are currently underperforming economically. And sometimes those underperforming economic areas are areas where we have a tremendous amount of need as a local community. We have a strategic need for economic development, and there might also be potential there. And so it could become our priority area, but at the same time, because of other underperforming factors, it might not be the priority area for development dollars to be. So what we can do is create these boundaries that are kind of minimized in size so that we can focus the economic development potential in those areas, and use the tax increment as the incentive for developers to come and put the economic development in that area to help us meet our strategic needs. The Continental Project Area is probably the most recent that we've done. We used to call it the Twinkie Project, but in the beginning of last year, in 2019, we developed that area. It's the old Wonder Bread Bakery area. And for several decades, that building sat empty and deteriorated, and was really just not contributing in any, any helpful or meaningful way to the redevelopment of our downtown. In fact, it was not only not contributing, it was an impediment to increased development. And so we created the Continental Project Area, and that has allowed us to remove that impediment to development and incentivize new development to happen, which will provide for new housing units and retail, and some really much-needed Class A office space, which is a big shortage for us in Ogden. And so it's a really important tool that can help contribute to our economic vitality. And in this case, for the Continental Project Area, it contributes to the central business district in really meaningful ways, and provides for the needs that we need, and helps, helps the community kind of bridge the gap between what is and what could be.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Would you like to read the next question, Brandon?
Sure, yeah. If there are no other comments regarding that topic, absolutely. So, "The city is purchasing five new refuse trucks. Are these electric vehicles? If not, why not?"
Councilmember Lopez, would you like to respond?
Yes, I can respond now that I muted my button. So the trucks that we have are compressed natural gas. They're not electric vehicles. Because, I mean, even though the electric vehicles has a technology, has advanced considerably, the city's needs cannot currently unfortunately met, you know, the needs with the existing technology, because the trucks that we have are too big. So our fleet division is constantly reviewing and keeping up to date on EV technology, and will certainly consider the future use of electric vehicles when the technology becomes reliable and up to date enough to meet the needs of our fleet. But as it stands right now, they do not. So, but we're constantly reviewing it, and hopefully soon, we can, we can start doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments about that one? Awesome. And next question, Brandon?
Yeah, so we're starting to get some questions on Facebook, so I don't know if you want to pause and try to address those before the meeting starts at 6:00?
Yeah, if you'd like to. I don't know if there's one in particular that you think Councilmember Hyer might be good at answering?
Let me...
Anything about planning? I don't know.
Right, right. I mean, there are a few. I'm sorry. Let's see.
I just can't see them. I mean, I guess I could turn on my Facebook.
No, you're good. You're good. There is a question that we, that was kind of answered with a previous, one of the prepared ones regarding officers. Let's see. So regarding the Marshall White Center, this is from Angel Castillo. "The Marshall White Center is in an opportunity zone. Why aren't you using funds to upgrade it?"
Does anybody know the answer to the opportunity zone question? Might be more to me economic development question. Tom, would you mind jumping in? I know you weren't on the agenda to be on the call, but you're not done yet yourself first.
Sorry, I had to find the button. It was hidden. The problem with opportunity zone funds is they can't be used by the public funding. They have to be used by a private corporation, because it's a tax benefit, and the tax benefit inwards to a corporation. So we're not, it's able to be used in the zone. We, you know, we could look at some other creative means of dealing with it, but otherwise, a public or a private entity would have to want to do that and redevelop it. So it hasn't really been practical.
Great. Thanks so much, Tom. Any other questions, Brandon? I'm worried we lost Brandon.
No, no, we didn't. Sorry. I was just looking at the questions.
No problem.
Um, I guess, yeah, here's a, here's a quick question from Shelley Brants. "What's up with patching up potholes with a shovel and asphalt and then rolling it over with the city's truck tires to pack it? My property taxes increased for that?"
Do you have a response for that, Councilmember Hyer, or anybody else that'd like to jump in?
Well, I don't have a good answer for that. Sorry.
Yeah. It's kind of challenging sometimes, because we're not the administrative, like, overseeing how the roads are repaired, or not necessarily in the council's role. It is a good question. Please, we can definitely reach out to our streets department and ask them about that.
Chair Taborca?
Yes.
If I may add to your comment, which would be, probably when we do future live events like this one, it might be, it might be, it might not be a bad idea to invite the administration and their staff so they can answer some of these questions as well. Just, you know, I mean, they answer our questions when we're in work sessions, and I don't see why that couldn't happen here.
Yeah, and Chair, I could maybe add a little bit to the, I mean, I know it's, it's got to be frustrating to see all those potholes in town, and I know no one's more frustrated than our engineering staff when they see those happening. But in our budget, we are funding, hopefully, folks are seeing, the 20th Street project, it's a complete overhaul and including the infrastructure that was underneath the ground. It's a massive, massive project. And in the current budget, we're looking at funding, doing a similar scale project on 26th Street. And we work closely with UDOT on Harrison and Washington and Wall Avenue for upgrades and improvements there. And we've done some improvements within the neighborhoods as well. But the cost of those projects is so significant that sometimes the only thing that we can do is patch up the holes. But in some cases, too, the patches are only a temporary means until, one, we can either get there to do the major overhaul, or two, we've been saving a lot of money in recent years by purchasing or renting the asphalt grating. I can't remember the name of the heavy equipment, but the machine that basically grinds off the top layer of asphalt and lays new asphalt on top. We, our engineering staff and public work staff have a kind of a set maintenance schedule that they go through the city and fix a lot of the problem areas. And so until that can get to it, maybe the, the patching the potholes and driving over them with the truck is a temporary means to keep people from experiencing too much damage on their vehicles until we can get there and do a proper patch. Sometimes also, there's contractors that are doing various improvements on nearby homes or in, you know, different areas for different projects, and they have to cut into the street and they have to put in a patch. Sometimes those patches don't hold up and things like that. So there's a lot of different reasons why we would have potholes and problems in the road. But we've been lucky that we've got extra revenue from, you know, fuel tax revenues and so on to put into some of these major upgrades, because we have a ton and ton of deferred maintenance in our roadways. So I don't know if that helps answer the question, but I think we all wish we could fix the roads all at the same time and in a much more solid way than patching it and running over it with the, with the truck. But knowing how our engineering division works and the high standards that they have, I'm sure that's just a temporary measure until they can get there and do it right.
Great answer. Is there maybe one last question, Brandon?
Yeah, we can move on to the last question, or to the, to the next question that we had. "What is the city doing to prepare for additional decreases in revenues if the economic conditions do not get better?"
Yeah, that's a really tough question. I had that on my docket to answer. I think everybody has heard that we are, the administration really is proposing to the council a pretty conservative budget, that all the directors and teams have met and really tried to scale back any, you know, costs that were beyond anything that were necessary at this time, including to our, you know, chagrin, salary increases are not included. So of course, they'll continue to monitor those reports. We don't get a lot of the reports until a couple months later after, for example, the sales tax. We won't be able to monitor that without being a couple months behind. So the council and administration want to continue to review those numbers very closely to see if that might be possible to do any increases and, you know, within, if things are turning up. But for decreases, the administration has reported that the departments have contingency funds. There's also, of course, the BDO revenue. There is quite a substantial amount of money that they're putting in reserves right now just to hold, just in case this financial downturn does continue to be a downturn for quite a lengthy time. So there's several measures the city's taking. And luckily, we haven't had to eliminate any positions at this point. I know other organizations in our community are definitely considering those things. So definitely trying to be as careful and as conservative as, as we all can be. Looks like we're right up on the 6 o'clock hour. I apologize, Councilmember Hyer. Would you like to answer a last question before we go?
It's not important to me, but...
Okay. Well, I really appreciate it. Next time, you'll be the first one up.
Okay. Sounds good.
Oh, yes, please.
There are a few other questions on Facebook, and we have contact information for most of those people, so we can, I'll try and follow up with some additional answers.
That'd be great. Yeah, and you certainly can always reach out to individual council members with questions, or, and we will definitely, if we don't know the answers, we will find out them, or direct you to the person that can help you with some of the information, no matter where it is.
Chair, how many questions are left? How many are on the Facebook that we have?
I don't know. I'm not able to see the Facebook.
There's three or four, but it's gonna, some of them are gonna take some research. We just don't, we can't.
If they were, if they were small, or, you know, with an answer that we could give in a short period of time, we could do it after our city council meeting.
Sure. Yeah, we'll let Janine decide, that I trust her judgment about these things. But we do really appreciate people tuning in and asking us questions about the budget. We certainly have a lot all the time as well. And we're happy to help you find your answers. So Brandon, just let me know when you're ready to switch over to the public meeting.
We're good to go.
Well, that was pretty quick. Well, welcome, everyone, to the June 16, 2020 Ogden City Council Meeting. Well, welcome, everyone, to the June 16, 2020 Ogden City Council meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. I'm just trying to double check. Yes, we're all here. So the first item on our agenda, which I'm very happy to tell you about, is a recognition, a joint proclamation for Juneteenth Freedom Day, declaring June 19, 2020, Juneteenth Freedom Day in Ogden City. And I believe we have Ms. Betty Sawyer accepting this proclamation, and Councilmember White will be reading it.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I am really excited to read this, declaring June 19, 2020, Juneteenth Freedom Day in Ogden City. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery in the United States and the emancipation of African-American slaves throughout the Confederate South. Union soldiers landed at Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865, with the news that the war had ended and that and the enslaved were now free. More than two years later, the Emancipation Proclamation was issued on June, on June 1, 1863. Until that day, slavery had been relatively unaffected in Texas by the Emancipation Proclamation, and Texas had even been viewed as a safe haven for slave owners to relocate with their slaves because the state experienced no large-scale fighting or significant presence of Union troops. And whereas, on the 1st Juneteenth, a name that combines June and 19th, the People of Texas, were read General Order Number Three, which stated, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection here to fore existing between them becomes between employer and free laborer." The Juneteenth announcement was met with jubilation that spread throughout the country as African-Americans relocated to neighboring states and became reacquainted with family. And whereas, the 1st Juneteenth celebration was a time for reassurance, prayer, and the gathering of family members. Juneteenth continued to be widely observed in Texas decades later, with many former slaves and descendants making an annual pilgrimage back to Galveston. Juneteenth today continues to grow within communities and organizations throughout the country. Numerous local and national Juneteenth organizations have arisen alongside older organizations with common missions of promoting and cultivating knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all the people and cultures. And whereas, during the 2016 legislative session, Utah became the 45th state in the nation to have an official state observance of Juneteenth Freedom Day, which is commemorated annually in Utah on the third Saturday in June. The Juneteenth commemoration has been observed in Utah as a community freedom festival for more than 75 years by various communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Caldwell hereby proclaim June 19, 2020, Juneteenth Freedom Day in Ogden City. We encourage residents, schools, businesses, and community groups to celebrate Juneteenth as a day of remembrance and celebration. We appreciate the significance, significant efforts of those in our community and state and state representatives to make this special holiday an official observance. And with that, I make a motion that we approve the joint proclamation declaring June 19, 2020, as Juneteenth Freedom Day.
I'll second.
I didn't hear who got the second.
Rich, Councilmember Hyer.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember White and a second by Councilmember Hyer to approve the joint proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I feel bad I'm not seeing Betty on the line. Do you see her, Brandon?
No, we're trying to get her on now, but in the meantime, I noticed Jeremy Shinoda is on the call and who's a representative of the Diversity Commission. I don't know if he wants to say anything or or not, if you if you would want that, or we could try to wait until Betty gets on the call, but again, I don't know.
Oh, no worries.
I'm working with Viviana Felix to try to try to get her on, so I apologize for the for the confusion.
No worries at all. Maybe, and I also see Kathy Darby on the line, and she's on the Diversity Commission as well. Not sure if either one of them would like to just make a quick statement, and then if Betty's able to join us later, maybe we, you can tell me she's on in between items, and then we can, you know, give her a little celebration. It'd be much easier if we could just see everybody in the crowd, right?
Right, right. And I did, so both of the commissioners have been promoted to panelists, and Betty Sawyer on Facebook does say, thanks for the support and this proclamation. We'll see if we can get her in the call, but both Jeremy and Kathy have been made panelists and can can address the council at this time.
Jeremy, are you, would you love to say something?
I'm not able to unmute myself. Oh, there I am, there I am. I didn't really comb my hair or anything. We just want to say thank you so much to the Ogden City Council and the mayor's office for supporting us in this effort of Juneteenth. It's, I'm sure it's a lot more complicated this year on Zoom, et cetera. You know, we normally have a have a big celebration, and we all get to go and and talk to people and table our, from the Diversity Commission, ask questions and kind of, you know, interact with the community, so weren't we able to do that? But we do have a lot of other things planned, so I'm sure it's going to be wonderful. I hope Betty gets on soon. I just heard from her a few minutes ago as well, so hopefully she'll be on with us shortly. Jeremy, do you have anything?
You might not be able to unmute either, Brandon. Hi, Jeremy.
Hi, Jeremy. I'm not sure if we're hearing the right person, but I also am very quickly trying to send the link to Adrian Andrews, who's on the Diversity Commission, who's saying that she just didn't have the link, so she wasn't able to join, but sending it to her right now, and so we'll get some comments, hopefully. I know, this electronic world is just a pain. I was going to mention that what might be happening, too, is that there's so many wonderful events happening, as Kathy alluded to. So some events that are happening locally are that on June 19, it's the Juneteenth Day, as we've said, the State of Black Utah Town Hall. It's a virtual event. You can get all of this information if you just look under weaver.edu backslash Juneteenth. So there's that event at 6 o'clock on the 19th. There's a commemorative caravan on June 20 at 11 o'clock. You line up at the Marshall White Center at 10, and then they're going to do a little caravan. And then there is a festival and holiday on the 20th, which is, again, a virtual event from 2 to 6 p.m. And then the Gospel Sunday and Father's Day Tribute, which is also virtual on.